Members have checked in, thereby constituting a quorum. With that in mind, we will get underway at 7:05. Please take your seats and clear the aisles.
Front row, blue shirt.
Okay. Did he, what, did he used to work? Did he work for?
DPW. He was first.
Is he now in the manager's office?
Yeah, Assistant Tom Andrew for Operations.
Okay.
Yeah, so he went from public buildings to Assistant DPW Director and then to.
Good evening, my name is James Kane. I have this distinct honor to serve as your Town Moderator for this special town meeting. Please rise and remain standing to join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unison under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. As is our tradition, we will take a moment to remember the service of past town meeting members who have passed away since we last met. Helen McLaughlin passed away on June 2, 2023. She was an active town meeting member from 2001 to May of 2022. Joseph A. Tony Thomas passed away on June 29, 2023. He was a longtime town meeting member from 1960 until his passing. Tony also served as a member of the Masonic Property Study Committee, as well as a member of the Finance Committee from 1977 to January of 1990. And Matthew Hogan passed away on August 25, 2023. He was a town meeting member from 1986 to 2017 and a guiding committed force in support of our public library. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to our special town meeting. To ensure good orders, tellers, please raise your hands so that all town meeting members can see you. All town meeting members should have their stickers clearly displayed so that all can see. Town meeting members are asked to sit on this side of the tellers. Only town meeting members or those with my specific permission should be on this side of the tellers. Residents wishing to enjoy the evening with us are asked to sit in the rear seating. All department heads are asked to sit to my lower left so as to be in a convenient location to answer questions if asked to do so. By way of reminder, our town meeting has a long and proud history of civil discourse and orderly debate. No outbursts in support or opposition of a member's comments or vote outcome are allowed. Furthermore, when one wishes to be recognized, please await my clear recognition and proceed to the microphone. If you are unable to move to a microphone, one will be brought to you. Once at the microphone, please clearly state your name and precinct and then proceed with your question. In order to ensure that all of your colleagues have an opportunity to speak, please limit your initial interaction to a question and one follow-up. Please hold any additional questions until others have had a chance to speak. Rest assured, you will be recognized. At this time, I'd like to recognize those to my left and right. To my right, Town Clerk Sharon Thomas, Town Council Stephen Madouse, and the Chairman of the Finance Committee Vikram, who I will, who I will ask to introduce his colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
In the order, starting with myself, the executives of the committee are Vikram Chabra, Dennis O'Connell, James Flynn. The members of the committee also seated in the order to my right, Jean Badenhagen, Brian Ganger, Lena Polito, Melinda Knitker, and Rajesh Bellagopuri.
To my left, Town Manager Kevin Mizikar and Chair of our Select Board Beth Cassavant, who I will ask to introduce herself and her colleagues.
Good evening, I'm Chair Beth Cassavant, and I am joined by my colleagues Vice Chair Theresa Flynn, Clerk John Samia, and members Michelle Conlin and Carlos Garcia.
Thank you, but we'd also like to thank Mark Sarah and Sback for their work this evening. With, with the, what? It's Mark Sback, it's Mark Sarah. With the introductions complete and the interruptions ended, let's get underway. Our town meeting operates under the laws of the Commonwealth, bylaws of the Town of Shrewsbury, and the town meeting time. I've examined the warrant and the Constable's return of service, and both are in good order. I ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and Constable's return. Hearing no objections, we're thought unanimously. On to the town meeting warrant. As we walk through the warrant, I will call the article. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Select Board will move the printed motion and second it. I will then ask the Finance Committee for its recommendation. Mr. Mizikar will then provide a crisp and succinct description of the article, and then we will move to any questions from members. Article one.
I move the printed motion under Article one.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends passage of Article one by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article seeks to make adjustments to the operating budget totaling $335,210, or just shy of two tenths of a percent of the total operating budget. Specifically, $106,500 to new salary and wage line items is needed to address employee recruitment and retention issues in dealing with wage competitiveness within the Department of Public Works, Library, Planning and Economic Development, and the Police Department. $104,000 is requested to increase the reserve fund. This will bring the reserve fund to 5% of the FY '24 expense accounts, which meets the town's fiscal policy requirement. The reserve fund is under the authority of the Finance Committee, is the only tool that we have throughout the year to make adjustments to the budget without coming back to town meeting. This higher funding level was the amount that I would have chose to make at the annual town meeting, however, the total available funding was not, the total funding was not available to us at the time. Most significant needs which may require higher utilization of the fund include continuing an ongoing cost increase in areas like energy, fuel, parts and materials, legal and operating expense associated with cable franchise license application, enforcement, and litigation, which have arisen after the May 2023 annual town meeting. And finally, an increase in two areas of the Fire Department's budget. First, $18,500 required to cover unanticipated costs associated with the settlement of the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters' union. This would specifically incentivize firefighters to become certified emergency medical technicians, especially as we're facing uncertainty over the long-term viability of contracting for ambulance services. The final amount, $106,210, will cover a cost associated with the backfill of vacancies due to injuries on duty. There's an obvious and inherent risk with duties of a firefighter, and our department trains better than nearly any other and diligently works to prevent injuries. Unfortunately, experience in our department and those in similar size will show that throughout the course of any given year, injures, injuries on duty occur. This matter has not been properly funded in the past budget submissions, and we propose to make this permanent adjustment through these actions this evening.
Comments or questions with reference to Article one? Comments or questions on Article one? Not seeing or hearing any, and this requiring a majority vote? We'll call the vote. All those in favor of Article one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Article one passes. Article two.
I move the printed motion under Article two.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article two by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article seeks to deposit $596,166 into the general stabilization account. The general stabilization account is the town's rainy day fund that would be used to overcome significant unforeseen financial challenges should they arise in the future. The general stabilization fund is a part of the town's financial reserves, which, when sufficient reserves are on hand, has a positive impact on the town's bond rating, enabling, among other things, lower interest rates during borrowings. Consistent with the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation, the Select Board has established a general stabilization policy requiring at least 5% of the value of the total annual operating budget for municipal and school expenses to be held in the stabilization account. This increase would move us to our highest level that is known, to $5,390,886, which is 3.69% of municipal and school operating budget.
Comments or questions with reference to Article two? Any comments or questions on Article two? Not hearing or seeing anyone? We'll call the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article two is adopted. Article three.
I move the printed motion under Article three.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article three by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article seeks to raise through taxation $350,000 the fund cost associated with capital improvement projects for fiscal year 2024. This is an increase of 18.31% over the initially proposed capital improvement initiatives at the annual town meeting. Specifically, $250,000 is requested for a school HVAC project, which will add temporary AC cooling to upper floor rooms at school buildings. This investment expects a minimum life of five to seven years and will lower the ambient temperatures within rooms mainly at the beginning and end of school years. As everyone knows, this has been a challenge, both at the end of last school year and the beginning of this school year, where educational programming was disrupted because of higher-than-average temperatures. Additionally, $35,000 is requested for building security project for both municipal and school offices, which would enhance security systems to offices in external building features. And finally, $65,000 for information technology hardware, including Wi-Fi endpoints at the library and computer replacements.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article three? Ms. Fritz?
Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Sandra Fritz, I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee. At our school committee meeting on October 11, 2023, after report from Mr. Jeff Howland, Director of Public Works, and Mr. Bill Tuttle, Division Manager of Public Buildings, the committee voted unanimously to support Article three. Article three will add temporary HVAC cooling to upper floor rooms at school buildings and other spaces in non-air-conditioned buildings, as well as enhanced safety and security improvements to school and municipal buildings. The proposed temporary air conditioning fix will allow the district to continue to optimize learning in spring and fall, when we have experienced high heat temperatures, as well as not, we will not have to consider canceling school or having early release days, which is disruptive to students and staff. The proposed enhanced safety and security improvements to school and municipal buildings promote the safety of all students and staff and reflects our community's investment in this area. I would like to thank Mr. Keith Baldinger, Assistant Town Manager of Operations, Mr. Jeff Howland, Director of Public Works, and Mr. Bill Tuttle, Division Manager of Public Buildings, as well as Mr. Mizikar for collaborating with the school department on these important capital improvement projects, and respectfully ask for your support of Article three. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article three? Write down print.
Diane Jones, precinct agent. So, 106 air conditioning units for just schools, four schools costing a quarter of a million dollars. This is a Band-Aid solution that's going to last about five to seven years, and it's a short-term solution to buy us time. What we need is long-term planning. Climate change is advancing much more quickly than was expected, and there are more hot days than there used to be. Even worse, they feel hotter than they used to feel, and that's because of the combined effect of both heat and humidity. So, on really high humid days, sweat can't cool us down because it can't evaporate. And kids actually don't have the metabolism to handle that. So they cannot learn on really hot days, and it's only going to get worse. 106 classrooms so far, where it gets up to 88 degrees. Annual learning losses, loss can be charted based on the number of hot days alone. That's not good for kids. So I am going to vote yes on this temporary solution, but adapting to climate change is a big, complex, expensive problem. So what is the long-term plan that we're buying time for with this? Unlike many towns, Shrewsbury doesn't have a sustainability director or a sustainability committee, so please explain how you will develop a more comprehensive plan and how you will give us the transparency that Shrewsbury deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you for those comments and your question. We certainly agree this is a temporary solution, and we're placing the operation of the immediate needs of the schools first and foremost to address, first and foremost to address this. Couple things going on in the, in the, with school planning specifically, there was a space needs study that was done, that was put into place and accepted by the school committee in the, the spring of last year, which takes a very thorough and comprehensive look at the, the needs of the community and specifically looks at the impacts of climate change on our schools. Currently, Dr. Sawyer and his team and a group of nearly 30 other individuals, town staff and residents are working to look at solutions at the elementary school level on a, a long-term basis. And of course, this body has funded a climate action and resiliency plan that we are nearly 90% of the way through. So the development of that plan will be used to, to set a number of proactive measures in motion to reduce the town's impact on climate change and handle resiliency matters for all of us. So I know many of you have been involved in the development of the climate action plan, and we've submitted, whether that be through response to surveys or engagement in the process throughout. I would encourage you to continue to do that, and we will continue to be transparent and ask for your participation in, in all projects and programs that we initiate.
Thank you. For the comments or questions with reference to Article three? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of Article three shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous. Article four.
Motion under Article four.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article four by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
The purpose of this article is to rescind the unused borrowing authorization provided by this town meeting for the new Beal Elementary School project. This is a financial housekeeping matter that is routinely undertaken at the end of any project for which there is a borrowing. A debt authorization is comparable to an open line of credit, and when there is an authorized but unissued balance, rating agencies see that as an opportunity for the community to incur more debt. By removing the balance, which is no longer needed for this project, will be, this will have a positive impact on future bond ratings.
Comments or questions with reference to Article four? Any comments or questions with reference to Article four? Not seeing or hearing any, we'll call the vote. Simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article four passes. Article five.
Move the printed motion under Article five.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article five by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article proposes to reduce the interest rate that is charged by the town when properties are being considered for placement into tax deferral in accordance with the referenced general laws. This current interest rate that is charged is 8%, and we're proposing a reduction down to 4%. The general laws give towns the option, the option to set rates at, quote, "no greater than 8%." The purpose, the purpose of reducing the interest rate is a matter of equity. This will lessen the negative impact on some of the most vulnerable residents seeking financial relief through a tax deferral. Tax deferrals are only eligible to those with less than $30,000 in annual income or on a case-by-case basis with demonstrated significant hardships. There is currently one property in town with a tax deferral with a total deferred current balance of $5,456.54. The maximum deferral amount is capped at 50% of the total assessed value of the property. When taxes are deferred, the town will receive the deferred amount plus any interest that's charged, at least if not before a property is sold.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article five? Article five, any comments or questions? Not seeing or hearing any, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of Article five shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article five passes unanimously. Article six.
I move the printed motion under Article six.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article six by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
This article proposes the use of $70,000 in Community Preservation Act funds for the transportation and restoration of historic fire apparatus formerly owned by the town. This apparatus, a 1926 American La France truck, has been deemed his, deemed historic by the town's historical commission. The Community Preservation Commission Committee reviewed the proposed project proposal at a meeting on September 11, 2023, and at a public hearing on September 25, 2023, and voted unanimously to recommend the use of funds as will be described. Town meeting members will recall the Community Preservation Act funds are generated through a special assessment on property tax bills. These funds are allocated into three different categories: housing, open space and recreation, and historic preservation. Historic preservation funds, which are being requested through this article, can only be used for projects that, quote, "acquire, rehabilitate, and preserve historic resources." Shrewsbury's Community Preservation Plan, which was updated by the Community Preservation Committee in August of this year, identified the first goal for the use of these funds for historic projects to, quote, "preserve and restore historic artifacts, documents, monuments, and cemeteries." The CPC's historic preservation fund balance is currently $155,900. Again, this project seeks the use of $70,000 of these restricted funds, as will be described by Deputy Fire Chief Seth Colby and Fleet and Equipment Maintenance Manager firefighter Joe Milos.
Gentlemen, would you please come to the well? Please introduce yourselves to the town meeting. Are you going to say anything first or go right to the presentation? I recommend those on the stage.
Thank you. Oh, we're gonna, yes, we, we are gonna have a, a presentation on the screen. I wasn't sure where you were going with that.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, good evening. I'm Seth Colby, Deputy Fire Chief in Shrewsbury. First, we would like to thank the Community Preservation Committee and Historical Commission for their support with this project. We are looking to bring Shrewsbury's third motorized fire apparatus, a 1926 American La France Type 65 truck, back to town. This is the oldest motorized Shrewsbury fire truck known to still be in existence. The first two were a 1922 Cadillac Touring Car that was set up to be a fire truck and ambulance, and a 1921 Mack triple combination motor truck. We've been unable to find any records of what happened to both of them once they went out of service. Most likely, they went for parts or to scrap. I would also like to make mention at this time that the Fire Department has in our care two hand-drawn and operated pieces of apparatus referred to as hand tubs. These are the Quinsigment Engine, which was purchased and delivered to town on August 16, 1850, and the Fountain, which was delivered to town on May 3, in 1851. The truck we're here to talk about tonight was delivered to Shrewsbury on July 23, 1926, and was in service for 30 years until 1956. After the, after the town sold the truck, it went through several owners, which you can see on the screen in front of you. In 1997, the current owner, Tim Tredway in Texas, purchased the truck. Over the years, Mr. Tredway has done work to the truck, always with the hope of returning it to Shrewsbury for our 300th anniversary. At this time, I would like to introduce Joe Milos, the Fire Department's Operation Manager, to speak to the current condition and restoration process of the truck. Joe has been in regular communication with Mr. Tredway over the past few months to discuss what is needed for work with the truck. Joe?
Thank you. Mr. Tredway purchased the truck in 1997. At that time, he reached out to the Fire Department and actually gave us a three-page letter on what he had with the truck and what was problems and what was his plans for the truck. He has always, like the deputy said, planned on returning the truck to the Town of Shrewsbury in hopes for the 300th anniversary. In talking with him fairly recently, he has done a good amount of work to the truck, which we have listed up. He's done and actually put through some effort to get the truck running and driving again reliably for what it is, for its age, and gotten it pretty mechanically sound so that it's actually operationally okay. He has also spent some time searching for all of the equipment that would be on the truck. So the truck had a bunch of small equipment on it for lanterns, fire extinguishers, hoses, adapters, and he has actually spent quite a bit of time searching to find. adapters, and he has actually spent quite a bit of time searching to find all of that parts that was missing on the truck. He's also acquired and gathered together quite the collection of spare parts for the truck. At this time, he's actually got to the point that he actually has a complete spare engine for the vehicle. It's not in running condition at this point in time, but he does have a spare one for it. He also does have the truck registered, titled, and insured in Texas so that it is a fully operational motor vehicle. We do have a couple of current pictures that the gentleman sent from the truck. The first one there is when the truck actually, for the first time, pumped water again since, from what we can tell, nineteen fifty-six, when it left the town of Shrewsbury. Someone had left water in the truck unfortunately over the winter, and the pump froze and cracked. The gentleman went through, fixed the pump on the truck, and as you can see in the first picture, actually it does pump water again at this time. Next picture coming up on the next slide, the pictures of the truck current day. He actually took these just before we put the presentation together for these. These were right at the current condition of the truck. He's gone through and done some of the replating on some of the lights and so forth, which you can see is back to being showroom condition for what the truck should be, and he's also spent some time, as you can see, putting all the small accessories on it. What he is willing to do, or what he's always wanted to do, was to get the truck back to town. If you go to the next one for it. Video should work. What we have left to do to the truck, and this is what we're asking for the funds for. At this point in time, like I said, and for the pictures that he has, running and driving, it's actually in pretty good condition. He sent a very detailed letter to us going through what is left to be done. So, he went through and did most of the mechanical work to the truck and got it back to the level of functioning. What he has not done is any cosmetic repairs to the truck. So, as you can see, the paint and so forth is what it was back when the Needham VFW bought it in nineteen fifty-six and repainted the truck to cover all of the Shrewsbury lettering that was on the truck at the time. So, what we would like to do is get the truck back to Shrewsbury, disassemble the truck, get everything painted and brought back to what it looked like in that original picture, also to put all of the lettering back onto it so it would be Shrewsbury's engine again, just like it was when it was delivered in nineteen twenty-six. Replate the remaining caps and find the few remaining pieces that are missing, and then go through and reupholster the seat, the other small things that need to get done to the truck to make it back to the point of parade quality. What he's always planned for is to have the truck back in town for the town to see, so it would be out at events such as the Spirit of Shrewsbury each year. He wants it to be in parades. He wants- wants the people of the town to be able to actually see the truck again like it was back in its day. So, that's what we're looking for, for what we have right now, and we thank you very much for your consideration in the project.
Thank you, gentlemen. Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Any comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Yes, how are you? Sure, could you just re- repeat that at the mic? Thank you. Where will the truck be stored, Chief?
It'll be s- it'll be stored underneath Station Two down on Harrington Ave by CBS. There's a- a bay underneath where we actually used to run the ambulance out of there years ago before the ambulance became bigger and bigger and doesn't fit under there anymore. So, it's the perfect space. It's climate controlled, and it'll allow us to store it there, and then we'll be able to bring it out for parades and other- other events and functions throughout the town.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Oh, yes.
Bridget Hilton, Precinct Seven. My question is about the maintenance that this is going to require, because my sense of these older cars is it's almost like having a boat, right? Like, you're gonna have to be fixing it for the rest of the time that the town owns it, and so what part of- or what consideration has been given to the maintenance of the lovely truck?
Mr. Milos?
Can anyone hear him? Okay, no, yeah, go back to the real mic, please.
So, yes, there is more maintenance involved with anything that's older such as that. Also, though, it's not a truck that's going to be running every day. It's a truck that's going to come out at best, you know, six, half a dozen to a dozen times a year. So, there will be some maintenance involved with it to keep it to that point, but not as much as if you were trying to run it more often. At the point that it's more on display at all of these items and then in a couple of different parades and stuff through town, if we were trying to use it as an actual fire truck again, that would be a totally different story on how much you'd have to keep up with it.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Yes, right down front.
Diane Jones, Precinct Eight. Sorry, that was very scary. Who's covering the insurance for this?
Mr. Mizikar?
It will be insured through the town's general policy. We'll work with our insurance broker to see if there's anything special that we need to do it. We have very broad insurance policies with up to three million dollars in umbrella, so this won't have a significant impact on that.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Six? Article Six, any comments or questions? Not seeing or hearing any? I'll call this vote. It's a simple majority. All those in favor of Article Six shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion passes. Article Seven?
I move the printed motion under Article Seven. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar?
This article proposes the update- to update the town's dog control law to comply with Massachusetts general laws, which requires the scheduled fines to be no less than the amounts listed in the proposed motion. It will revise the reference for hearings on violation from the Select Board to the town's, quote, "hearing authority," end quote, for further conformity with the general laws. The penalties- the penalties are assessed for the following violations: failure to restrain, removal of defecation, and four miscellaneous violations, which include failure to license, no collar or harness, no license tag, failure to vaccinate against rabies.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article Seven? Any questions regarding Article Seven? Not seeing or hearing any, we'll call this on Article Seven. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Eight?
I move the printed motion under Article Eight. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends the passage of Article Eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar?
The purpose of this article is to introduce language to authorize the town clerk to make non-substantive administrative changes to the numbering and lettering of the general bylaws in order to make the numbering con- conform to the format of the bylaw without a vote of town meeting. Town meeting authorized the town clerk to make these types of changes to the zoning bylaws in May of 2023. Again, this proposes similar authority for typographical and numbering purposes for the general bylaws.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Eight? Do we have any comments or questions with reference to Article Eight? Not seeing or hearing anyone? We'll call the vote. Simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article Nine?
I move the printed motion under Article Nine. Second.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article Nine by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar?
Article Nine is identical to Article Eight, authorizing the town clerk to make non-substantive changes, but this time to the personnel bylaws. Again, this is for renumbering and typographical matters without a town- a town meeting vote.
Comments or questions with reference to Article Nine? Not hearing or seeing any, we'll call the vote on Article Nine, and please don't bolt the building just yet after this vote. On Article Nine, all those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. Prior to adjourning this evening, I'd like to preview and share my intention to open a public discussion as as- on aspects of our town meeting. As a result of many conversations with town meeting members and other appointed and elected officials, I think it's time for an open discussion amongst town meeting members as to several aspects of our town meetings. Is this the best space to hold our town meetings? Is the current microphone and speaker the most effective? And is the technology for presenting articles to town meeting the best we can do, or is it time to make a leap forward to a more integrated approach? Please think about these and other aspects of our town meeting in the coming weeks. I will organize and advertise meetings to allow for an open discussion amongst town meeting members to make sure we take a check-in as to where we are and how we operate. Thank you for your time this evening, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.